Welcome to the virtual forum for the Asbury Park Board of Education, sponsored by the Statewide Education Organizing Committee. I am Mary Ann Kligman, Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Monmouth County. The League of Women Voters is a 103-year-old nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization. Membership in the League is open to everyone age 16 or older of any gender who supports our mission to empower voters and defend democracy. As a nonpartisan organization, we never support or oppose a party or candidate. A recording of tonight's forum will be available on our website, l w v monmouth.org, and on vote411.org, the League's national nonpartisan voter guide. No other recording of the event for any purpose is permitted as agreed to by the candidates. The recording can be shared in its entirety. Using portions or screenshots is not permitted. And now here is Liz Smith from our sponsor.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Monmouth County for hosting our Candidates Forum tonight. And thank you to all the candidates, Mr. Will Wright, Ms. Wendy Glassman, Mr. Joe Grillo, Mr. Anthony Remy, Mr. Craig DePaola, and Ms. Denise Nadell. I am Liz Smith, the Director of the Statewide Education Organizing Committee. And just a little bit about our organization. We are a 501(c)(3). Our focus, our mission, is to improve educational outcomes for children by organizing public school parents, family members, community members to advocate, take action together, and contribute to educational equity. Thank you again for all of you who are participating. And now I'm going to turn it over to the League-trained moderator, Janice McGowan, who, according to League rules, lives outside of Asbury Park. And thank you very much, Janice.
Thank you, Liz. Welcome voters and candidates to the Asbury Park Board of Education Candidate Forum. I'm happy to be here and serve as your moderator. Tonight, our goal for the forum is to help you, the voters, learn about the candidates running for Asbury Park's Board of Education. This year, you have six candidates running to fill three seats on the board, each for a three-year term. Tonight's forum, excellent way to learn about candidates. Another way is to visit vote411.org, the League of Women Voters' online voter guide. Several of your candidates are participating in Vote 411. Thank you, candidates. So you can read more about their vision for Asbury Park Schools there. Before I introduce the candidates, a quick review of tonight's format. First, we intend to finish the forum by 8:30, giving us an hour and a half for the program. We will begin with the candidates' opening statements, each limited to one minute, in random order that was previously determined. Our timekeeper will hold up a yellow card. Would you do that, please? Thank you. To let the candidates know that they have 30 seconds left, and a red card when their time is up. Candidates, keep your eye on the timekeeper. And when you see the red card, finish your thought and your sentence as quickly as possible. Following the opening statements, we will turn to the questions submitted by you, the voters, and our sponsor, the Statewide Education Organizing Committee. I will pose each question, and each candidate will have one minute to respond. I will call on the candidates in a random order. Given our timeframe, we expect to cover about eight or nine questions. Finally, after the questions, we will wrap up with the candidates' closing statements, again limited to one minute, followed by some very brief information about voting. Now let's introduce the candidates in the order they will appear on your ballot. As I call your name, please raise your hand so that the viewers will know who's who. First, Will Wright, whose slogan is "Building Bridges", and then, running as a slate with the slogan "Support Asbury's Children", we have the following three candidates. Wendy Glassman, Giuseppe Joe Grillo, Anthony Remy, and, running as individuals, Greg DePaola and Denise Nadell. Okay, remember that you can vote for any three candidates, which means you can vote for a candidate on the slate without voting for the entire slate, if that's what you want to do. Candidates, thank you for running to serve your community and for being here tonight. We will begin with your opening statements. And the first opening statement will be by Ms. Glassman.
Thank you. After 35 years as counsel to a large bank and advisor to its board, I retired in 2017 and promised myself that the next chapter of my life be one of service to Asbury Park, the city I love, that my family has lived in and contributed to for four generations. To that end, I serve on several city boards and commissions. I advise local arts nonprofits, and I founded the Sunset Lake Park Conservancy. In being so engaged, I've learned so much more about our community. I believe that my analytical, problem-solving, governance, and leadership skills and experience in strategically guiding organizations to become goal-directed and lean are what are needed to change the culture, finances, and learning shortfalls troubling our schools. Collectively, the board must be a model of leadership. It must govern and be accountable to our community and its children who are not being best served by their most important public institutions. If elected, I will work to the best of my ability to address the problems and bring quality education to our kids so that they are literate and equipped for a future, are source of support for our teachers, and bring accountability to our schools within a rationalized budget. Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Grillo.
Hi, thank you very much. So my name is Joe Grillo, and I'm running with Wendy Glassman and Anthony Remy for Asbury Park School Board. I'm a current member of the board. I believe that our ticket is the most experienced, most engaged, and most ready to lead a new majority on our school board. Now, as a current board member, along with Anthony Remy, we've done a lot in the past few years. Expanded the Dream Academy to include 6th and 8th grade. Graduation rate has gone from 48% to 82%. Our ELA scores went from 9% to 40%, but we're not spiking the football just yet. We realize that there's a lot to be done. And that's why I'm proud to run with Wendy on our ticket as someone who is so engaged in the community that we can hit the ground running. We do not have time for on-the-job training for our school board members. And we have that experience ticket that can lead the school board forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Remy, lifelong resident of Asbury Park. As Joe mentioned, there were several things that we accomplished. And with the help of Wendy, we could accomplish some more. There's so much that can be done, and there's so much unfinished business that we have yet to do. I believe that we have all the tools, all the resources for these children, for our children of this city, so that they can go out and be global. Global, when I mean global, we're not just talking about Monmouth County or just New Jersey. We're talking so they can compete on a global level. And we have it. We have the tools that can bring Asbury Park back to the way it used to be, striving, achieving, and that's really it. That's really what we're striving for. And we already accomplished certain things, and the job is not done. We still got more to do.
Thank you. Next, Mr. DePaola.
Parents and community members, I come before you today as a proud resident of Asbury Park since 2016, someone who values civic engagement and firmly believes in the power of community. I've witnessed the remarkable rebirth of our town, serving as a shining example of what can be accomplished when we come together with determination and effective leadership. We can say with confidence that our town is thriving and full of promise. Unfortunately, that cannot be said about our schools. I must express my growing concern about the current state of our education system. The burden of top-heavy administrative costs has overshadowed the needs and well-being of our students. It's disheartening to witness resources being allocated to areas that do not directly impact the education and growth of our children, which by state law, it is our goal and purpose to provide a thorough and efficient education for all kids. If elected as board member, I am committed to listening to parents and concerned residents to prioritize the needs of the kids in our district. No one else can tell us differently. We have the power to create a school board that is dedicated to transparency, accountability, and the scholastic success of Asbury Park's kids.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Wright.
First of all, I'd give honor and praise to my Lord, Savior, Jesus Christ, because of him we wouldn't be here tonight. My name is Will Wright. Thank you for having me. I'm from Mobile, Alabama. I came to New Jersey after spending four years in the military. I was a farmer, and two years of farming at Fort Monmouth. I left there and went to Air Cruises Company on Route 34 of Wall Township. There was 12 years as inspector. I left there and went to Georgia Central Power and Light Company for 32 years, 15 years in the union, 17 years as a line crew supervisor. I know how to walk on both sides, working with the administration plus the management. I was the president of Part 1 for eight years. I've been involved in the Little League for 21 years. Also, I'm a trustee at my church, where I run a lot of, I'm in charge of all the events plus maintenance work at church. I worked with all the parents and kids for the past 40-some years. And I think that I can make an impact by coming aboard the board, by bringing the, getting the board to come together and work together and get rid of the hostility and the, and not working together, not working together with the city, not working together with the administration. We need to fix that. And I think I have that will within me to make a difference on the board of Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Nadell?
Good evening. As I came back to my roots a couple of years ago, I wanted to make a change in the community I once was part of. The successful and bright futures of our students is all anyone wants. But how will we actually ensure greatness? If we don't see the result, we don't see the results. I see frustrated taxpayers wondering why our school taxes consume so much of the tax bill, also with no results. I aspire to bring open communication and a collaborative process, mutual respect for each other, new eyes and wisdom to the table, and establish a real change in the Asbury Park Schools. Let's change the narrative and find a way to put our kids' futures first. My message is very simple. Initiate the change we seek and deserve. It's never too late for any child's future to begin.
Thank you. All right, now we will begin the questions. Again, there will be one minute for each response. The first question is, how do you define the appropriate role of a member of the Board of Education? And first person will be Mr. DePaola.
I would define the role as having a keen eye on, number one thing, in a distressed, I mean, the role would change depending on the district. But in our district, we have a distressed school system. And one of the biggest problems is we have top-heavy administration costs. I think as a board member, we should be making, they should be making it a priority to keep a keen eye on these top-heavy administration costs. You are also the executive board to spending choices. And our community is making poor spending choices. I think as a board member, you have a responsibility to keep a keen eye on that, too. Student performance. It starts and ends with the board. And we have a responsibility. Sorry, the board has a responsibility.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Wright.
Personally, I think that getting on the board, first set up the annual budget for the, for to run the district, that would be one of the first things. And also, we would evaluate our hiring employees to make sure that they are accountable and responsible for their actions. And the board members itself need to be accountable for their actions. And there need to be someone in charge of the board members to have to report to. And we won't have all the parents coming to the meetings and raising hell at each other in there because we didn't follow up to get back with the parents. And we need to change that and that would eliminate a lot of the problems that we have with the board.
Okay, thank you. Next response from Ms. Nadell.
Well, what is a school board member supposed to do? One of the first things, and very important, is to oversee the whole annual budget and to make sure the money is allocated accordingly. As we see it now, we're feeling that the money is going to the wrong places, and we can really readjust it and make a difference. The other thing is to work as a team. Also, I'm not saying that now. We need to all be together with one voice, one direction, and one goal. And we are, we're the governing, we're the governing board of the City of Asbury Park Schools. And I take that very seriously. And I think that it's not being used to its potential right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Thank you. Yeah, I see that there's a lot of generalities that are being said by some of the folks that are running. But when you actually are on the board and you see that the only responsibility you have in terms of the employees is the superintendent and to over, and to provide oversight for that via policy and via instruction. Then you also have the budget, yes. And we're proud to say that both Anthony Remy and I voted no on every single budget that included a tax increase in it for the residents. And that's why we're running, we're running with Wendy because I can't think of another person other than me and Remy that is going to take that budget and decipher it and make the right choices for our students. And then also, in terms of being a blockade for added positions, one of the things that's important to remember is that experience counts. And we have that experience to make sure that we continue to hold the line on tax increases like that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Remy?
What I feel makes a ideal board member is being able to be transparent with the community and your administration staff, being able to ask those questions that your community members are asking, and being able to say them to the superintendent or in front of the whole board, and be able to create a team atmosphere. Because you may have certain ideas, but it doesn't go through just by yourself. You have to have majority votes. So being able to assist others or get them to see your vision and be able to put that out there and map it out, that's the best way. We talk about budget. It's all, it's all just not one person. Every, so much things come into play once you get in there that you don't realize when you're on the outside looking in. But when you're inside looking in, when you're, when you're, when you are on the inside, your whole perspective changed. And you got to get majority. You got to be able to stand up, speak, and then do what's right for the children. At the end of the day, that's really what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Remy. Okay, Ms. Glassman?
The traditional role of a board is to set policy and procedure for the district and provide direct and approval of a budget and direct supervision of the superintendent. What that means is that you have to exercise leadership and set a tone for the entire board and for the entire district. Your district consists of several constituents. It's the children, it's the parents, it's the teachers, it's the administration. All of those voices and their opinions come to play when you determine what the policy is for the board and how it is that you want to lead this district forward.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is, describe your own experiences with schools and education, and what other experiences have prepared you to be an effective member of the Asbury Park School Board? And the first person this time is Mr. Remy.
Well, currently, I'm on the board now. There's so much that I can speak about, but just the things that I'm able to do. Being here, I'm born and raised in Asbury Park. You know, I came through the, I came through the school district. So it worked for me, it could work for others. So being, being with the community, being able to talk to parents and vice versa, being able to talk to the teachers, to the administration, all that comes into play when you're doing what's right for the children. Being able to voice, being able to be a voice for them and be able to provide opportunities and resources for them, building relationships with them so we can help them. That's, that's really it. That's, that's, that's what it comes down to. In my, to me, my, my experience, that's my experience.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Nadell?
I was very involved in my two children's education. I was the PTA president through all the school district in all three positions, three schools. I was on many committees with the Board of Education, helping me to, I'm sorry, helping to pick administrators. And I was on advisory boards. So I feel like I've experienced a lot of what the board should be doing and does do. It was a very, very successful school district. That's really it. I'm ready to jump in. I have the time, I have the energy. And I'm hoping that I can contribute and make the school district what it has the ability to be.
Thank you very much. Ms. Glassman?
So my experience with education is both my own education and my role as a teacher. I attended public school, K through 12, went to college. And I had a dual major. In addition, I took all of the work for secondary education certification and did student leading in the Baltimore City School System. Following that, I decided to go to law school. I have two law degrees. And after completing those two degrees while I was working, I also taught at King University. In addition, through the Sunset Lake Park Conservancy, I helped fund and organize a summer theme program for third graders in Asbury Park with the Preserve Wildlife of New Jersey organization. So I've done some work in the public school. I am committed to public education. And I believe that that is the great education that we can provide for our kids.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wright?
I have to agree with Mr. Remy with the exception of one thing. I didn't go to school here in Asbury Park, but he was point on about his opinion about what makes it really work, working with the kids. In my experience for 40-some years, working with the kids and working through, not in the school, but working through the district with the children, with the parents, I've learned a lot and have the experience to continue to do what I'm doing. And that's all I really have to say. Like, I agree with Mr. Remy on the other part.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grillo?
A great question. Well, besides the, you know, six years that I've been on the school board, I've, you know, in my, in my professional life as a nonprofit fundraising professional, I've managed budgets that funded sustainability in schools, nature programs in schools, and created, helped create different climate change education programs for students. And also, just in terms of the community, I'm an 18-year resident of Asbury Park. I co-founded Asbury Park Dinner Table, where we fed over 350,000 dinner meals to families and children all over the city. I think the most important thing, though, is, and the most important experience I have is that my daughter goes to school here. She's a freshman at Asbury Park High School. And you get a totally different perspective on the school district when your child is there. So I think that, more than anything else, has deeply impacted my experience in the local public school education.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. DePaola?
Oh, well, as a non-educator, I guess my experience would come from me being, my own experience in school as being a student. I went to school for a degree in accounting. I'm also a product of the New York City Public School System, grades K through 12. It was an excellent school system. I've, as a fund accountant, I worked with budgets. For the past 25 years I've been working, I work for a labor union. I've been met with adversity when, when things were pitched. I'm not afraid to tackle that, to take on the tough questions. And I also served as a real estate agent in New York City. From that, the takeaway from that is that transparency is absolutely paramount to everything. I think this board needs to take some cues from that and start becoming more transparent with the community.
Thank you, Mr. DePaola. The next question is, how do you propose to increase the involvement of parents and the community at all levels of education in Asbury Park? And this time, we'll start with Mr. Grillo.
So it puts me in a unique position, being a parent with a child in the, in the school district, where, and it's something that, that Mr. Remy also mentioned, that relationships count. The most valuable currency in community organizing, community development, is the relationships that you build and you build upon in, you know, within a community like Asbury Park. I'm fortunate to have those relationships at all levels of government, but also with the community leaders and the parents in the, in the school district. And I'm meeting more and more. I'm the only board member, along with Mr. Remy, that actually had kind of separate Ask Me Anything sessions with parents, with stakeholders. And that's something that I'm really proud of. We did that on our own because we saw that there was a lack of wanting to do that from, from certain administration folks. So we did, went and did it on our own. And we're going to continue to do that and be more transparent and listen more and more to what the parents and the community has to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright, what would you do to increase the involvement of parents and the community?
I would think to get the community, get the parents more involved into what we are doing. Get them involved. And I think the parents would bring a lot of richness and a lot of resources to the district. Plus, they were inspiring education. There's a lot of education, a lot of smart people out there. We need to work, like I can do with the Little League. I get, I got parents involved in what we do. And that's why we were able to do the things. We was able to take the kids to Washington, D.C. last year. We did a lot of things this year with the kids, but we had the parents involved. And I tell you, working with them is, is an honor and just, but you got to be compassionate. You got to show them love, and they appreciate you for what you're doing out there with their children.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Remy?
Like Joe said, we had a session, we had a couple, where we invited parents to come and sit and talk to us, voice their concerns, or just, you know, just to get to know each other. But me, I'm, I'm from here, born and raised. When I walk out the door, they're talking to me. They're asking me questions, and I don't have no problem answering questions or getting their thoughts and bringing it to the whole board, building that transparency, continue doing that. Whether it's in person, it's on Facebook as well. Like, they will message me everything. So just continue to get them involved, let them know what's going on. And if someone is having an event, I'll go, I'll show up, I'll support, and then, you know, promote our district like that as well. I do that. There's events all the time, this whole summer on Springwood. I'm at the events, I'm supporting, they're supporting us. They want to hear what we, what we're doing. And then, you know, vice versa. We just break bread, and then we get them involved and invite them to the board meetings, invite them to what the children have going on, to the games, things of that nature. Sorry. A little pass.
That's okay. Thank you. Mr. DePaola?
So I'm hearing a lot of softball answers to a very important question. I think one of the biggest things is active listening. I don't think this board is doing much. I don't think this board is doing much of that. I think they're doing lots of talking and breaking bread and all this, but active listening. I, I would make it a priority to actively listen to community members and genuinely understand their, their concerns. Uh, collaboration with some incredible community activists that are out there that I've met. Um, throughout this, through this process. I wish I got, I wish I started this process earlier because I can't believe the passion that's there. Uh, and, and I, I'll keep circling back to this transparency. I strive to provide clear and transparent information to the community regarding the curriculum in St. George District. What I get to see, you get to see. I mean, obviously with, within the boundaries of what the, uh, the board's lawyer allows, but that's what, that's where I stand. Uh, regular communication and you know what, continuous improvement. Grade us, grade, grade the, grade the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Glassman?
Think that parents are involved. I think, I think parents want to be heard. They're involved in the sense that they care. Uh, they just don't always feel that there is an avenue or that their thoughts are welcome. So, uh, again echoing a, a lot of what other people are saying. It's making it clear that every parent's concerns and thoughts matter. Um, that we schedule times when it's convenient for parents, uh, to be able to show up. And we don't do it at what would otherwise be inconvenient times, uh, when they can't leave their other children, when they're working. Um, you know, parents have, in this community have a lot of responsibilities. Uh, but I think that if we make ourselves available, uh, at times that are convenient for them and we really show that we're listening and we are responsive to their comments. And part of that is also going to be, um, having translators present in the room because there are people that feel very uncomfortable, uh, when, when they're not understood.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, Ms. Nadal?
Couple of things that came up which are very important. Craig, you said active listening, key, 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 key. And transparency, extremely important. To attend the current board meetings is a very disconnected situation. We need to make the parents have time to come. Wendy, thank you for bringing that up. It's very important to allow parents to have a voice. Just community involvement, letting them know you're there. Being a board together, key thing. Seeing that the board is getting along, a key thing shows the community that they mean something to them. And, um, getting out as much as possible and talking. That's the only way you can engage people is by meeting them. And of course, there are great activists in the community that give us great insight and advice on how to proceed.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. Decreases in state funding have led to cuts in direct services to students while the district continues to hire administrators. How do you suggest that the district improve its allocation of scarce resources and prioritize student needs? And the first response to that one is Ms. Glassman?
Uh, to me, this is a, a very easy, um, and clear question and, and answer. We have known for years that the cuts in funding were coming. And I think we failed to adequately prepare for that and live within those means. We can do that if we specifically plan and identify what our true goals are, which is really the education of our kids. Everything else is secondary to that. We need to support our programs that seek literacy. Um, we need to fund the arts, that's the other way we teach literacy. Um, we need to if our, our, give our teachers the resources to teach. Um, and there's not, there's not a lot more that's required. We must dispose of unnecessary properties. If we have them, we need to refocus our requirements. Um, and eliminate things that are not essential for the education we're doing.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Remy, next?
This is why I'm running with Wendy. She hit it right there, the un- unnecessary spending. Um, and, and she got a great financial background, so she can definitely help us. Um, like me, like Joe said earlier, when it came time to vote for more administrators, we voted no because we, we know it does, it's not working, it's not gonna work. We need to do what's right for the children and get them programs, uh, things, things of that nature, more resources. Uh, we advocate currently for, to, to the city and we're advocating to the state to get us more funding. Um, it's just things like that that we have to keep on doing. Uh, we already knew that this S two bill was coming and that these cuts were gonna come. But now it's time to stop the bleeding, like how me and Joe been doing, stopping the bleeding and figuring out ways how we can get more money.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Nadal, next?
Well, as everyone has said, the cuts were coming and we knew they were coming. And now the taxpayers are funding so much of the school budget that they're in distress. Um, I have to say that the administration really needs to be streamlined. And we really need to get the support people in there to work with the kids. They are the ones who make the difference, the people who sit with those kids every day. And want to, and make the difference. The teachers feel left out and not part of the team. We're hoping that we can get some kind of collaboration where there's more meetings with the different parts of the school district and share those, you know, the ideas to get there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wright?
I must say that just about everyone who spoke so far in reference to this question has been point on. And I, I really think that we really need, if you're on the board, you really need to evaluate the budget based on the programs and use the money wisely. And, and that's the only way we could, uh, fix this particular problem that the school have. And that's about all I have to say in reference to that because everyone has said, which was on my mind prior to this question. Thank you.
That's the reason we scramble the order. Next, Mr. DePaola?
So I think Wendy hit on something really important and I, I, I agree with her, sell off the real estate that this, that this school administration is holding. Uh, but I think, uh, one of the most important things to address the top heavy administration costs. The board has the power to do this, but I think we need to call for an internal audit, not an external audit. I've heard that the external audit came back clean and that's a financial review. I'm talking about an internal audit, one that begins and ends with the request of the board. I'd love to see it, this board, uh, audited through an objective lens, see which jobs are important. Which of these admin, which secretary to the secretary to the secretary is worth keeping? You know, we have someone sitting on the board that's been here for six years. I'm curious to hear the answer to this. This didn't happen overnight. This is a, this is, this is, this goes way back. I'm curious to hear the answer to this. As a taxpayer.
All right, thank you. Mr. Grillo, you're the last one on this one.
Well, as a homeowner, as a taxpayer, I'll give you the answer. And the answer is, is that the, the district was ignored for thirty years. Uh, and laid to waste because of corruption and malfeasance and disorganization and a board that couldn't even meet. Uh, because there weren't enough members to meet. So the first thing that had to be done was to make sure that the board itself uh, increased their governance score with the state. So that way, uh, we actually had competent people on the board that could do the, do the work. Second of all, the, if you actually speak to the data, uh, Asbury Park has below the, has a below average administrative cost per pupil in the county of, of Vamuth County. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be streamlining because we have been streamlining. Uh, like Anthony Remy said, uh, we voted no multiple times on, uh, on redundancies and positions on the board, most recently in August when, uh, or, or most recently, the last, uh, the last, uh, uh, meeting where, uh, there was an attempt to put an, an assistant superintendent on board and we stopped that. So we're keeping a keen eye, a keen, keen eye on that. There just needs to be more. And I also believe about selling off the real estate that's not being used because, uh, that's something important.
Thank you. Well, guess what the next question is about? Because this is, this came in from the community. Considering our declining enrollment and cuts in our funding, what do you think of the idea of selling one or more underutilized buildings and consolidating services and office space? So some of you have already answered, but we'll get everybody's answer on this one. And we'll start with Mr. Wright.
Well, that's the question. I, I haven't really researched that particular situation, but if we're not using the property, but I hate to see the historic buildings being sold off. For, just to make money for people that don't live in this area has, has nothing to do with the history of the school. I would not, I would not like to see that. However, if there's area that's not being used and we could use the funding towards the school, not just to make somebody else rich. And then I'm a hundred percent with that. But I definitely would not like to see the historic sites sold off. Because there's a lot of history. When you got a ninety year old person passing by to look at the school that he went to, his family, it means something to them. So I think we should consider that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. DePaola?
Okay, so to speak to that, I, I would agree with Mr. Wright. No, I, to, to clarify, we're not talking about seller, selling that beautiful high school. I would do anything, board member or not, to keep that. Uh, actually, it's underutilized. That building can hold eleven hundred people. I think at best, there's two hundred and fifty people going to that building at any given day. So you, we just spent lots of money on a brand new HVAC system in that building. It's underutilized. Why not get rid of that office on Fourth Avenue? That administrative office on Fourth Avenue. There's, there's, there's real estate scattered all over this building. Move them up to the third floor. And why don't you condense and make some admin offices, use some underutilized office space in the, uh, in the high school? You know, there's lots we can do. Honestly, I think to cut, to cut the, to, to increase the budget, we need to go deeper. Why don't, you know, why don't we consider o- other things? Uh, why not separate the boards out?
Okay. Um, thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yeah, uh, so I don't think that a maintenance building that's run down on Second Avenue would be considered, uh, a historic uh, building. I think, uh, something like that, a property that's worth probably about three and a half million dollars um, can be sold and we're in the process, we've already gotten the evaluation and I'm hoping with the leadership uh, of Wendy and myself and Anthony, we finally get this done. Uh, the current board leadership has dragged its feet on that. Um, but, uh, I also agree with Mr. DePaola. Uh, I would literally put my body in front of a, a bulldozer if anyone tried to do something to the, uh, to the high school. Uh, especially now that my daughter goes there and I see the beauty of it and how critical it is. It is a little bit more than two hundred and fifty people that go in there. Uh, I would say about triple that. Um, but I would look at some of the underutilized properties and, uh, unused properties and sell them and and I agree with some of the folks on here, end expensive leased offices. Um, we, we've been fighting a, a long struggle on this. Hopefully with Wendy, uh, uh, with me and Anthony, we can get it done as a new majority on the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Glassman?
So, this, this issue was on, um, on our platform when I ran three years ago and it's on our platform now. Never was the high school part of that equation. Um, absolutely, everything everyone has said. Um, but we are talking about the Obama School, which has some environmental issues. We're talking about a maintenance facility that we, we don't need, uh, to have. We're talking about an administration building that could have been, uh, vacated three years ago at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, twenty thousand dollars a month. We could tutor a lot of kids for twenty thousand dollars a month. So we're talking about at least those three properties. One of the suggestions that's come up in conversations was to take the Obama School, uh, sell it to a developer and create affordable housing. Whether it's for, to keep families in this district or whether it's for uh, artists, for a live workspace so that we don't lose, lose the creative community that we have. But we have people here that could live in, in that area. If it was just properly renovated for them.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, the next question is, um, this may seem like a softball, but several people asked it, so I guess it's a real community issue. If you are elected to the board, will you support opening school district playgrounds to the community and repairing playground equipment such as the basketball hoops? Uh, Ms. Nadal?
I definitely feel the importance of play areas for families in the school district and children is important. I understand that there are some safety issues related with that, which we'd have to um, sit down and figure out. But generally speaking, the more we can engage the kids on the properties that we own and the schools, the more we can get the parents involved and get the um, we just have to have to figure out how to take care of these kids while they're there and supervise them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Glassman?
Uh, yes, I am in favor of that. I'm in favor of as I co-chair the Mayor's Wellness Committee, I believe that all of our residents, um, should have access to space to exercise and play. Um, and this is both for parents and their children. Uh, we have some beautiful facilities. We have a, a very beautiful and very famous track. This summer, I was a volunteer track coach, um, for the city's recreation department and a lot of the parents told me that they wish they too, uh, could come. There are ways to keep it safe, whether you have a key card, whether you open it dawn to dusk. There are communities all over this country that give their residents access to land that they really own. I mean, it may be in the name of the school district, but every single resident and taxpayer in this city pays for these facilities and they should be accessible.
Thank you. Mr. DePaola?
Um, I would definitely, uh, agree that, you know, the playgrounds need to be preserved. We can, um, restore those. Uh, you know, I, I wanted to just go circle back, you know, I started, I said something, um, before um, separating the boards. So I, I, I think my, my head started to process the question in a different way. Um, you know, here it was, we're focusing on our assets, you know, liquidating the rest. But what I meant by separating the boards, I think I was, I just wanted to clarify that position. It's just an idea I was having and, um, just to think outside of the box. And maybe like because of the problems that this board is having, just as an idea, maybe this, maybe a great idea would be to have separate boards for the elementary school, secondary and high school. They all seem to be dealing with, um, their own nuanced problems. Uh, I don't want to go off too far off topic. I'm way off topic already. I understand that. But, um, I, I just wanted to clarify that. It just came out of nowhere. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, regarding the, uh, playgrounds, Mr. Remy?
One thousand percent. Um, that's something that I ran off of my last turn. Um, and then I, I was raised on the basketball courts behind the high school and third grade martial as well, um, when I was growing up. Played bitty basketball out there, played pickup games, everything. Playground was open when I was growing up. And that's something that I want to bring back. And we have been in discussions, um, with that, with our current board on how to open those, um, safely and securely. Um, it's just something as well needed. It keeps, it keeps the children out of trouble. They get to exert their energy in a positive way. Um, and then it also brings mentors to that area as well, if you have the basketball courts open. Um, there's so many great men out here that can be, that, that are coaches or they don't have a place where they can coach or volunteer or just help these kids get off the streets and do something positive with their life. So I'm with that a thousand percent because that's what helped me grow up, to become the man you see today.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, this, this is, this is a, a, a fundamental plank in our, uh, in our platform is to open school playgrounds and fields to provide a safe space for physical activity. I'd like to say that we prioritize the kids in, in, uh, you know, in, in in the community so they have a place to play like, uh, like In the community, so they have a place to play like, uh, like Mr. Remy says. Um, not only that, but we're also in talks with the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative. Uh, to build um, three tennis courts over by Bangs Avenue. Um, that's going to be, that's going to prioritize um, the uh, tennis programming. Uh, and, and, and things of that nature. So I think a combination of, of not just securely and safely. Opening up the playgrounds and fields in an orderly way. Um, I think you combine that with really good programming that already exists, both in. Different nonprofit organizations and the Asbury Park Recreation Department. Um, and our summer initiative that we do with the schools. I think it would be a home run. Uh, we just need the will and the people on the board to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Yes, I agree with the board in reference to. Having opened the fills, the, 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 the sport event, the sport and fills up for all the uh, citizens in town. There's a great feeling to look out and see the different people coming in and running around the track and as long as they're taking care of it and they're. Who bringing dogs to make sure they're clean. We have also one is protecting to make sure they is, is, is taken care of. It, it should be, it, it should be because I had to fight like heck to get a key myself who runs the little league to get into the gate by my little kid. So I, I went through. Almost had to call the, 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 the president of the country to get a key. To open to get it with my children, probably all. So I think it's a good idea if we can get those gates open and open up to the citizen and. We just got to manage to make sure that it's taken care of and that's what's important. But I agree with all, everyone so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Please describe your own philosophy on the issue of balancing parental rights and student rights. And we'll start with Mr. DePaola.
Um, actually, that was one of the questions that I have posted on the, on the site. So, you know, I put a lot of thought into that. Both should be respected and balanced. Uh, collaboration and open commu- communication are key to addressing this issue. Regarding the parental rights, I would encourage regular engagement with parents. I would uh. Parent teacher meetings, surveys, open forums, create environments for parents. To voice their concerns, suggestions and expectations regarding their children's education. Uh, taking their input into account. Regarding students' rights and wellbeing, we'll encourage what we are legal, legally able to create and safe. An inclusive learning environment where their individual needs and rights are respected. Promote diversity, equality and inclusion. Uh, anti-bul- anti-bullying campaigns, mental health support, ensuring equal access to educational resources and opportunities. Um, am I over time or am I okay? Oh, uh, I'd also advocate for the development of clear policies and procedures that address uh, potential conflicts between parents and students.
Okay. That was, that's good. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Wright, how about your philosophy on this issue?
Yes, I think that, I think I answered that question before. It was, I said equally, which means that. A right is a right to a person to. By law, and I think the parents should have put their rights protected as well as the students. Even though we need, we need someone in charge to make sure that the rights of the students is adhered to. And, and somebody got to be responsible for the kids because the kids are a certain age and not responsible for. Not knowing what their rights are, but there should be someone there who is responsible for their rights. But I do agree that they both should be treated equally.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Grillo.
Can you be more specific with the question? Uh, is it just parental rights versus student rights in general or?
However you want it.
Okay, well, I mean, one of the things that I'm most proud of uh, is that our school district. Is a place for students to grow and to learn and to be themselves. Um, here in Asbury Park, we'll, we will always support our students and staff to be their true selves. On their own timeline and their own journey. And we must take students' rights into consideration. Um, uh, very seriously. Um, now that doesn't mean, I think sometimes we're conflating parental rights with parental involvement. Um, parents need to be a primary source for uh, a student's educational growth, mental health growth. Um, and in collab- working in collaboration with the teachers and the staff, we can, you know, we can make that happen. We also need to be aware that, um, you know, students, especially in high school. Uh, are questioning things and questioning their own identity and we have to be very careful of their own safety and security. Uh, and that's an inalienable right that, that we need to be uh, responsive to. Um, so that, hopefully that answers your, your, your question.
I think it does. Thank you. Um, Ms. Nadal.
Parents have to be there for their children. I really don't believe that thing, decision should be made with a minor. That the parents are not involved in. That to me. Is very counterproductive. On the other hand, when you're in high school or older and you have some more sense of what you are. I feel like you can express yourself the way you need to. But again. Parents need to be involved in major decisions in their children's lives. Whether it be. Direction of education or personal choices. I know I would want to be, I was involved with my kids and. I listen to everything they say. So it's got to be a community decision. It's got to be the group of us. And don't leave the parents out. That is just not what I'm for. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Remy.
Um, parental and students' rights. Um, I believe a parent should be able to be a parent. Um, students should be able to express themselves, grow with the support of their parents. Um, and just create a safe environment for both. To figure out how, because a, a lot of people, um. Well, me, I'm Haitian. I'm Haitian American, so I grew up differently. So the way my parents parented me was different than how they parented other people, other children that were born here. And it's just the way it is, whatever is with your culture, but be able to. Raise their children how they seem fit and for their children to be able to be respectful. And be able to grow and show themselves how I already feel, how I already feel fit with the support of their parents. And if they want to discipline, how they discipline and by law, if it's good, not breaking the law. Then.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Glassman.
So I think it's a, it's a difficult question and it's just so broad that it's hard to answer very simply because. I don't want it to be about an undercurrent if we're talking about gender and sexuality. So I don't want to talk about that first. First and foremost, I want to talk about. Uh, but again, going back to communication with parents and trust in, in the school district that parents. Feel that when their children go to school, they have teachers who care for them, who are educating them. But yet are letting their children grow and experience being themselves. And that may be saying silly things, that may be protesting something, but that's all part of finding your voice and growing up. There is nothing harmful in any of that. And that's where you say, I want the students to be students. I want them to be children and grow. Um, and I want parents to trust the teachers that are educating their students. If we have that level of trust. I think the issue in many respects goes away, but again, it's how we. How we lead and, and how we teach.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the next question is, Asbury Park Schools seem to have an unusually high staff turnover. What will you do to improve that situation? Mr. Wright?
Well, there's a program that we had, it was such a problem, I can call it track and retain. I think if we. Come up with a formula to attract even people to come to school to teach there and. It, that includes salaries. Respect. Working together with the superintendent or whomever. It, it would make a difference. We won't lose as many employees or with teachers and so forth if. We work together and make it attractive. So that they will stay and other people from the outside would be glad to come in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Remy.
Um, I would say making the morale better, um, with better administr- well. Just administration, just knowing how the board vision wants the. The whole student, the whole district to go. Um, and be able to create, create an environment where teachers feel as though they're comfortable, they have the resources that they need to teach. Um, there's no type of um, unnecessary drama. No one has any agendas, that type of thing. Um. Just make it a better environment, create, create the morale, make it a place, make it attractive. That this is where you want to be and this is where you want to teach. And be able to teach our children so they could shine and grow. And it starts from the top down.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Glassman.
A couple of weeks ago at the board meeting, there was a ceremony for retiring teachers. There were about twenty teachers. That had given thirty, thirty-one, thirty-five years of service. They were beloved. The, the room was full that day and we didn't really know why so many people were attending the board meeting. And it was all to celebrate these teachers that were leaving. And Mr. Wright and I were sitting next to each other and we were looking at and saying how sad this was because we were losing a generation. Of teachers. And that may mean that there aren't people to teach the, the new teachers, but I believe. That if we offer comprehensive training for new teachers, if we make our schools attractive. So that we can attract uh, teachers to come to our school, offer competitive pay. Um, create a collaborative and respectful environment and get rid of a lot of the uh. The noise and the static and the conflict that appears to exist between the administration and the teachers. We can both retain teachers and attract new good teachers.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. DePaola.
I, the ecosystem is unhealthy as measured by the grades. Drop in enrollment, low graduation. Um, Mr. Grillo seems to think that there's seven hundred and fifty people in the high school every day. I, I, I. I challenge him on that one. Um, why would anybody want to work in a school system? Where the superintendent just arbitrarily makes decisions. You know, just recently. I mean, I'm listening to this. It sounds like we, we're, we're a, a, a school system in Monmouth. I mean, sorry, in Marlborough. You know, everything is just so rosy. It's, it's struggling. It's awful. We're a beautiful town by a thriving town by the beach. And we're having a problem attracting teachers. There's endemic problems in our school system. Start thinking bigger. The superintendent has too much power to make arbitrary changes. They just, they just protested him by wearing black, silent protest. I support that. You know, think bigger. Innovation zones, they're. Uh, Arkansas, forty-seventh in the nation in terms of schools. Sorry. Okay, good.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Mr. Remy and Ms. Glassman. We need to build a culture of collaboration and excellence. Because that's the only way to attract families and teachers. And what I meant by seven hundred and fifty is both kids and teachers. Uh, look, I remember when, when folks were telling me about uh, having three thousand people in, in the school. But the most important thing is to support the teachers with training and, and resources. And, you know. I know that, again, Mr. Remy and I have uh, have voted against uh, these different arbitrary transfers. Uh, from one school to another. As a parent with a child who has special needs. Um, I know how important it is to have that routine and build relationships between the instructors. And the uh, and, and the students, especially if they have special needs, special education. Um, and that's why I don't tolerate it. Uh, some of my fellow board members do and they just rubber stamp what the superintendent does. Uh, I know that Mr. Remy and myself, we are not like that. And with a majority with Ms. Glassman, we put an end to that. And respect the teachers, give them the tools to teach our kids, uh, our, our most valuable asset in the, in Asbury Park.
Thank you. Ms. Nadal.
I definitely, from the outside looking in, it looks like a very toxic situation. The teachers. Are not happy. They feel that they're ignored. They are the people who sit with our children every day. We need to make sure our children are educated by people who are feeling comfortable and care. Um, as far as, I have to agree with what everyone has said about the state of the school district. And I really do feel that we have way too much power sitting there with the superintendent. And that needs to be addressed immediately.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think we have time for a couple more questions. Um, what do you see as the importance of art and music at all grade levels in the Asbury Park Schools? Um, we'll start with Mr. Grillo.
So, uh, the arts are an integral part of not just. Um, our community here in Asbury Park, but uh, as part of our platform. Um, running together as support Asbury's children. Um, years ago, when there were budget cuts. And uh, the, the board uh, voted yes to cut uh, art. Teacher positions. I was the, the sole vote that voted no on those cuts. Because I know how important the arts are to uh, to, to, to our kids. And, uh, and that's why with Mr. Remy and Dr. Michael Penna, who's on the board. Um, we just introduced a whole slate of arts-related curriculum courses. Um, that started this year. That includes voice, that includes visual arts, includes dramatic arts. Um, and I'm proud to say that I, I'm running with a team that is going to have a laser focus on expanding. On the arts programming that we started, we restarted this year. It's so important because it honors Asbury's culture. And our history. So, um, it's, it's fundamentally important.
Thank you. Ms. Nadal.
The arts are extremely important in school districts. Not every child can exceed in academics. But they can have a wonderful voice to share with people or a wonderful pen to make beautiful. Paintings and artwork. That gives them a lot of pride. It also gives them the ability. To interact with other people in a way that they feel a little more comfortable. So absolutely. Arts are a must. I'm glad to hear that we're expanding those programs. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Yes, I agree. Art is extremely imperative that we maintain in school. To me, it's just. It's just as important as football, baseball, basketball, any other sporting event because it shows the kids talent. A lot of kids might not have talent to run a football, but they can draw a beautiful picture. And I think that's very important to have that program and continue to fund it to its fullest. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Glassman.
Think that the, um, the human brain functions in very fascinating and different ways. There are a lot of avenues. Uh, to engage students, uh, to excite them, to let them explore themselves. Um, allow them to determine what, what their interests are, what their place in the world is. Um, and because of the way our brains work, we reach children through art and music. Um, in ways that we might not in traditional things, in traditional methods. You can teach math. And English through art, uh, and through music. And. It, it, kids don't know that. That always that they're learning, um, those subjects through those avenues, but they do. It's also a way for children to communicate with each other who don't all speak the same language. You'll always find kids who, who. Don't speak any English, but can communicate by making music together or making art together. And it allows us to, to build community and then it builds pathways for kids to, to learn. And they'll learn English and they'll start to relax and, and their minds will.
Thank you, Ms. Glassman. Mr. Remy.
I agree with, with, what everyone said. Um, and like Joe mentioned, uh, created an art program. Um, but me growing up, it was tremendous. I played the trumpet in a, in a band. You know, when you put all those instruments, instruments together and you're making such a beautiful sound. of music, song, and to see the reaction, everyone clapping, cheering you on, they're just feeling good. It's a beautiful feeling. It's another way that we can express ourselves and show our talents. And the same with art. Design something or make a beautiful painting or drawing. And then to see people reactions and they feel good and they tell you about it. It's a great feeling. And we need that and a hundred percent.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. DePaola.
Uh, so to, to speak to that, um, this addresses something I've been reading about, the academic achievement gap. Um, you know, kids that don't have art, that aren't exposed to art, music um in their school, in their curriculum are disadvantaged. It carries forward throughout their life. I, of course, I support that, but you can also go beyond that. You know, you have to think bigger with a distressed school system. Maybe we can start thinking how to incorporate AI. How can we can start incorporate coding into the art, e-commerce? Uh, you know, marketing, fundraising, having them, uh, having kids open up an art gallery in school. You know, it, we need to start thinking bigger. You know, empower these students to break free from the stigma that they are just in school to learn and go to college. And if, and if they don't, they're, they're a failure. There's, there's different paths to success. Art would certainly be one of them. Music is another. There's lots. I, I don't think that, I don't think this school system is giving those kids a fair shot at all.
Thank you. Um, okay. This is the last question before our, your, uh, final statements. What will be your two top priorities as a member of the board? We'll start with Ms. Nadell.
My first priority would be to do a sound budget that takes care of all the students' needs and cuts out all the extra stuff. And that goes with selling the properties that are unused and maximizing the facilities we have. Maybe investing a way to rent out space on the nights and weekends to help our budget along. The other thing I would probably be doing is getting in there and sitting with that superintendent and all getting on the same page because that is not happening right now. And um, that to me is very important to start that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. DePaola, the two things that you would be your top priorities.
Two things, internal audit and an internal audit. And I, of the administration, there's top-heavy administration costs of the usage of the properties, the, the everything. You know, I'm running on a message of hope. My ideas are being floated here. The incumbents are running on their record. And from what I'm hearing tonight, they're very proud of it. And I don't know why. So, an internal audit would, would reveal a lot, in my opinion. You know, uh, we're in a situation now, this S-two budget is dropped in our laps. We're trying to scram, I see the bud, the board trying to scramble to um explain it, but you're talking about lots of neglect, six years of neglect. I would, I would love an internal audit. I would love to know why we need all of these admin positions. We don't need them, in my opinion. Let the, let the audit prove that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grillo.
Yeah, actually, what Craig is talking about is, uh, when he says an internal audit is, is something that's been done in uh, in Lakewood and a couple of other places called an operational audit to identify and eliminate waste. And I've been pushing for, for a long time. Um, we need the majority on there in order for that to happen. So I do agree with, with Craig on that particular issue of having an operational audit and conducting that. Um, but you start with a multi-year strategic plan um that includes selling the Second Avenue property, selling the Obama School property um for safe, sanitary and affordable housing for families because families are getting pushed out of Asbury Park. And the only silver bullet out of everything we've spoken about this entire forum, the only silver bullet to your taxes going down and uh, and, and our, 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 our competition going up is increase in enrollment um and ending the expensive leased offices. Look, I'm already hearing uh talk of of them extending those leases, which I'm uh completely against. So for me, um, it's, it, it, it starts with a multi-year strategic plan uh that includes an operational audit uh and we advocate for more funding from the state um and, and sell our properties.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Glassman, what were your two top priorities, Steve?
Yes, I mean, I, Joe and Remy and I have spent hours talking about, about these things. And again, it comes back to, you know, we, we have a large plan that, that encompasses all of this, but it's it is first the strategic plan because from that strategic plan, you identify what your actual goals are, what your mission is and how you get there. And again, we, we've said it before, everything that doesn't fall within that is waste. And it's not what you invest your, your money in. So you have the budget. And the second thing is creating a culture of learning and excellence. And that is both for the students and for the teachers. Uh, and that also, once we do that, our, and we have improved literacy, our kids have confidence. Um, our schools are performing better, our teachers are happier and engaged in their teaching. We will, the students will come. We will get students back into the school district and again, back to, to the issue of enrollment. So again, it is learning, it's a culture of learning and it is a long-term strategic plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Remy.
Um, just as everyone said, um, especially Joe and Wendy, um, with the audit. Um, everyone has great ideas, but nothing happens if you don't have majority votes. You can have the best ideas you have, best ideas you want, but nothing happens with majority vote. And with Joe and Wendy, we will have majority vote to do the audit, to keep advocating for our children, to keep doing the things that we've already been doing. Um, everything's increasing now. We, we, our test scores are increasing. Um, people don't talk about that. Um, we, we already have talks about relocation of central office and the maintenance building and repurposing buildings. We already have those things in the work and then when, once you have majority, it'll just continue. Once we have majority, it will continue. But other things happening, going on and everyone else's, um, political agendas, headed agendas, that's when things get lost and that's when things are not for the children.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright, you get the last bite here.
Yes, I definitely think that working with the budget, making it coincide with the programs that we have so we won't be wasting money. And number two, I really think that we need to work, get the board to work together, get the board to work with the city, get the administration to work with the board. They've been able to work with the superintendent. We need to strengthen that particular area before we can move out and start doing all these wonderful things. The ideals are wonderful. The ideals are great, but until we get a solid foundation within itself, then we'll be talking about this next year, next year, next year, and the next year. We need to work together to get things done. And until that happens, we'll be having this conversation next year.
Okay, thank you. So now it's time for the closing statements. Again, each is uh one minute long and the first person is Mr. Remy.
All right, um, first of all, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, and thank you all for joining. Um, just want to say, I'm gonna continue fighting for our children and continue advocating, doing the things that need to be done before we lose this district. Um, everyone made great points. Everyone has great ideas. But if we don't come together to execute these ideas, nothing will change, just like Mr. Wright said. Um, I just want to say, good luck to everyone. Let's just do right, let's just do the right thing. Let's just stop with all the um back and forth, the bickering, the political agendas, the hidden agendas, whatever you guys got going on and other people got going on. There's gonna be other people in your ear saying that we should do this, we should do that. But if it's not for the children, don't do it. Don't fall for the carrot. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nadell.
I wanted to thank the League of Women's Voters for having this event tonight. It was very enlightening for me to hear everyone's point of views. And once again, I just want to reiterate that the way our school district is to succeed is to have that open communication, transparency, and mutual respect for each other. And this includes students, parents, school administrators, board members, teachers, staff, residents and taxpayers. I've seen great potential school districts can achieve and the length they go for their students. I believe our district can have that ability also. Just to mention, we spend, we, no one really looked at these numbers this year, but thirty-eight thousand dollars per student is the allocation we have right now with zero results. We could talk about how our test scores are improving, but they are way below state average. They're over eighty percent below the state average. That is not successful. And once again, I have a simple message. Initiate the change we need and everyone deserves. It's never too late for any child's future to begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, your closing statement, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Linda Kinsey, the moderator, Ms. McGowan, and also Ms. Murphy for putting this together. It's awesome. And I thank all the uh board members and incumbents that I learned a lot, listened to each of you because I've never been on the board, so I was listening very closely and a lot of great ideas. Right there again, until we learn to work together, nothing's going to go anywhere. And we have our hearts in it for these kids. And then we must do what's right for these children and not to get our name on a poster on the street. I would not put my name on the poster if I didn't have to because everything I've done for all these years, I don't even, when I, Little League, I don't even, I'd be every time I take a picture, they have to make me take a picture because that's not what I'm there for. I'm for the best for these children. And I go to sleep on it. I pray on it every day and I mean it from my heart. If you're not here with your heart into it, if you're here bickering with somebody else because some personal, then you're here for the wrong reason. You shouldn't be on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Glassman.
I apologize and so I repeat myself, but thank you to all the viewers who've taken the time to, in the interest to participate in this. Um, this is a critical period for us. The board has to serve and protect its most vulnerable assets, our children and our community. I really believe that the city's future depends on the decisions that we make. Public education plays a profound, a profound role to give children good and productive lives. I and my team will bring to the board the courage to lead, to set policy and set the tone of the district, choose leadership, demand unequivocal standards of performance and respect, bring rigor to strategic planning and budgeting, support our educators and turn the financial challenges of school funding into opportunities to rethink our physical footprint, staffing and costs. In a word, holding ourselves accountable in executing a quality educational program that we as a community may be proud of and at a cost that's acceptable to all and supported by the community.
Thank you. Mr. DePaola.
Uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be part of this forum. While I may not have a background as an educator, I do believe that my perspective and skills can contribute to a positive change for a troubled district. I'm humbled by the passion and dedication I have witnessed so far and it encouraged me to advocate even more. I may lack traditional experience within the field of education, but I am confident of my abilities as a disruptor to the conventional ways that aren't working and coming up with innovative ways to get this district back on track. We are a thriving town with a failing school district. We need to see an effort from every stakeholder, parents, students, taxpaying residents and school board reps. If you have the ability to complain, you have the ability to contribute. If you vote for me, I am here to bridge the gap, but I am only one voice. Let's come together, united by our shared goal of providing our students with a solid education. If we keep electing the same people, we will keep getting the same results. Let's get some fresh faces and ideas onto the board. The Board of Ed is not, is the boss, not the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Mr. Grillo.
Boy, I, I wish there were six seats that were open for the school board because I think uh we actually agree on, on a lot of things uh that, that we've spoken about today. Um, but at the end of the day, experience counts. We're in a time crunch here um in terms of what's been happening on the board. And we cannot wait for on-the-job training with new folks that have to learn simple things like that you can't have separate boards for a, a one particular school district or that we could just quote-unquote get along. I believe that it's not about getting along or agreeing, it's about alignment. So for me, I think it's important that Wendy and Remy and myself are elected to the school board because we, we have a plan, we have a vision for the future. And that includes focus on literacy, academic achievement and growth. It means supporting our teachers with training and resources and developing a multi-year strategic plan that includes selling Obama School property and the Second Avenue property, ending expensive leased offices, conducting an operational audit and advocating for more state funding with the existing relationships that we have, all to benefit our children, our most important uh, uh, our most important uh commodity, uh, uh, our most important valuable uh thing in, uh, in, in, in the city.
Thank you. Thank you candidates for participating tonight. Thank you for such an enlightening and um interesting discussion. And thank you for running to serve your community. I know being on the school board is not easy. Uh, you certainly don't make any money at it, uh, but it's a great service to your community. Audience, thank you for your questions and for demonstrating your interest in being an informed voter. This is how we make democracy work. If you have friends and neighbors who could not attend tonight, the recording of tonight's forum will be posted both on the League website, L W B Monmouth dot org and on Vote four one one dot org. The recording can only be shared in its entirety. The use of excerpts is not permitted. Before you log off, a few quick reminders about voting and this year's general election. Election Day is Tuesday, November seventh with in-person voting at your regular polling place from six AM to eight PM. To vote, you must be registered by October seventeenth. You can take advantage of early in-person voting on the voting machine at any early voting site in Monmouth County beginning Saturday, October twenty-eighth until Sunday, November fifth. Choose a convenient time from ten to six on Sundays and ten to eight every other day. The nearest early voting site is in Neptune at the Senior Center sixteen oh seven Corleese Avenue. Or you can check Monmouth County Votes dot com for other sites that might be more convenient for you. If you vote by mail, you should have your ballot already and can mail it postmarked by November seventh. Or return it to any Dropbox in Monmouth County. In Asbury Park, the Dropbox is at Asbury Park City Hall, number one Municipal Plaza, the Bangs Avenue entrance. If you would like to vote by mail in this election, you can still apply for a mail-in ballot. If you apply by mail, the deadline is October thirty-first, or you can go in person by three PM on Election Day. There are three excellent websites listed on the slide we are looking at if you have questions. L W B Monmouth dot org, that's the League of Women Voters, Monmouth County Votes dot com, that's the Monmouth County website, and Vote NJ dot gov. Anyone who missed tonight's forum can view it on L W B Monmouth dot org. Also, check out your candidates on Vote four one, Vote four one one dot org. The QR code on this slide will take you directly to this race. Finally, you are here tonight, so I know you are all voters, but I'll say it anyway. Don't forget to vote and please encourage your friends, family and neighbors to vote too. Local elections are so important. With that, good night and thank you again to everyone on and off screen and in the audience for making this a most informative evening. Good night.